This is the Wapakia area school district board of education meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've called the meeting into order. All the, uh, all of us are here in person and, um, is there a motion and second for the approval of the agenda?
Will you approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, there's an awful lot of people here. And we will be for 10 minutes if anybody wants to...
I'm going to ask Ms. Hare to introduce the speaker.
Okay, I would like to introduce Nikki Regauen. She is representing the parents from Chain Elementary.
Would you like to move up a little bit?
Sure, I can stand forward. Um, I also have, Ms. Andre Hansen is going to hand out, just to hand out to all of you that will be a good reference for you as you, um...
You can stand right here on this chair.
I don't want my back to be to anyone, so, um, alright. So I'll try to keep it short and sweet, but your handout is coming around. Members of the Board of Education, my name is Nikki Regauen, as Ms. Hare pointed out, and I am representing parents of students at the Chain Elementary School. In the short time to prepare for this meeting, we collected, um, a number of signatures. In fact, I have my, um, we have 108 families at the Chain School. We did send out letters to a majority of those families just asking, um, for opinions on adding a third and fourth grade to the Chain School. And we did receive 61 of our responses back. Fifty-seven were in support of an expansion of the Chain School to include third and fourth grades, and four responses did not support, um, an expansion of the responses we received. So with that said, um, many, we had many verbal endorsements also from individuals that said, I've even had individuals whose children don't even attend, um, Chain School, they attend WLC, and they said, "Absolutely, I think that would be fabulous to see something like that." And then all of the people present this evening are here in support of this petition as well and, um, changing the grade configuration of Chain Elementary School to, um, include 4K through, um, fourth grade. I don't have to tell you what a wonderful school Chain is. We thank you for the work you've done to keep it running so smoothly. There is one big thing that could make it run even more smoothly and be in the best interest of the students and families involved. Let the second grade students stay there for third grade and then fourth, and then go on to middle school. We wish to present research on why less moving of buildings is best for children. In the handout you received, um, all students expect, um, to attend elementary, then middle, then high school. Having an additional move in the middle of elementary years is not best practice according to research. And added convenience is of course, um, what the parents, uh, or is of course, that we as parents wouldn't have to drive to three different buildings to transport all of our children of different ages. This change would not only benefit our children and our families, it would be a huge benefit to WLC as well. And I have listed some reasons as to why, um, many of which have been voiced by teachers. Many of these reasons as well have been voiced by teachers. More even distribution of special education needs between buildings. Alleviate overcrowding in 4K classrooms at the WLC. They only have room in the building for one section currently. Special education, or special schedules and space better utilized at WLC. It's my understanding that currently WLC, their elementary, um, class, FIAID classes, the FIAID room, or the gym is split into four sections for gym so that all classes can actively take part in gym class and they can get all classes accounted for in a week's time. Smaller teams of teachers at WLC, teachers working in pairs. Is research to be more effective than groups of 10 per grade level. More realistic lunchtime schedules at WLC. Students are rushed through lunches starting early and ending late to feed, um, all 700 of them. Administration load, um, Mr. Urs Pomer evaluates 40-plus teachers a week and Mrs. Hare has seven teachers that she's, um, evaluating each week. Busing times, um, we've been assured that this change would not cost any more in busing. In fact, it's possible that this change could make it so that Chain would have its own route, letting kids ride the bus for shorter periods of time in a day, um, as Chain buses are empty right now with the busing as it is. Cost of traveling teachers, this change would eliminate travel costs for up to eight employees who currently travel back and forth between the Chain School and WLC. There would be enough kids at Chain for a full day of services for all of these traveling teachers. Fire hazards, uh, in the WLC gym for concerts and events, family events. There's a, with as large population as they have, there's, when you add all the family and grandparents and everybody in there, tends to build quickly. And eliminate any questions or complaints on where students are placed, uh, when, for kindergarten. All Chain enrollments would be based on address alone. So, you will probably ask, what will this cost the district? We have been told the answer depends on special education numbers in Chain addresses, in the Chain address area and fourth grade class size numbers. As you know, full well based on the wonderful programs that we do offer in the district, sometimes a little extra cost is worth it if it's in the best interest of everyone involved. With 10 benefits to the students and staff and only two drawbacks, we respectfully ask you to consider this. Incoming enrollment is steady. Chain has eight large empty classrooms. WLC does not at this time. Please urge administration to look more deeply into this change. We look forward to hearing your decision at the next meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration. I also, I do have this, this exact letter for all of you also because it does highlight, or I have the 10 points listed, so I'd like to distribute that to you as well. Thank you.
Just so you, what, what just happened is he's referring it to the instructional committee. We'll have a meeting where we can talk about this more in depth sometime in the near future.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? All in, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Communications, Dave.
Betty, was that you seconded it?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, it was Steve.
Communications, under donations, um, once again, a lot of nice donations. The Christmas report, it was, it was in the packet, I hope you had a chance to read that. It's some, some of the things that, uh, schools were able to do with our, uh, families, who were struggling during the Christmas time. The Theda Care, there's an annual community, uh, discussion and as part of that, people win prizes. And the prizes are a hundred dollar donation to charity of your choice. Vicky Peschel won the prize and donated to the district-wide PBIS program. Rotary Club, uh, donated a thousand and fifty-one dollars to the live program at Wapakia High School and that money's being used on a popcorn machine and supplies for the, uh, group of students. Wisconsin CPA Grant Award to the high school and, uh, business head teacher Teresa Duda, $1,130. This has been kind of an annual award, it's not the first time she's won it over the last several years. And, uh, she uses that money to take her kids to a, uh, to a CPA firm and, and do a, uh, field trip, you know, with some of her students. There's a donation by Daniel and Bonnie Cranky, $1,000 to the Wapakia High School wrestling program. And then the Booster Club, $900 to boys soccer and $700 to, uh, women's hockey. So we'd ask for a motion to approve those donations.
Hi, group.
All in favor?
Aye.
No thank you notes this, uh, month, but recognition, we have, uh, bus driver recognition is February 8th through 12th, currently going on. There is a proclamation in your packet from Governor Walker in regards to the bus driver recognition and our, and our appreciation to all the bus drivers do. It's interesting they do that week during February when the, when winter is in mid, mid-form. Our bus drivers done an excellent job, especially over the week, uh, last week when we had struggled with, with the roads. Middle School District Spelling Bee, uh, first place tied to Aiden Schuler and A.J. Nimmer. Third place then to Libby Fox and fourth place is Sam Nicolai. So congratulations to, um, those students.
Takes us to, um, meetings attended. Ed, I know you attended the school board to...
Oh, yes, sure, okay. I won't belabor you too much with the, uh, the state school board association meeting. I went to, I believe it was 11 different sessions. Three, three or four of them were the large delegate or large assembly and then, uh, seven or eight of the smaller ones. Uh, I will report a couple things and then we'll move along here. The resolutions that you all had copies of, um, as the delegate, I obviously went to that assembly. All, I think there are 16 here, maybe 17. All 16 of these were voted upon and 15 of the 16 passed pretty much, uh, heavily, like unanimous. I mean, uh, some of them were like, there were 320-some votes for each bill, our delegates voting. And, uh, for instance, the second one was 304 to 13, uh, 285 to 28, very heavily in favor of the proposals, with one exception. And the one exception which I'll just let you know was the very last one. I think it was just coincidence it was the last one. And it, it got quite a bit of discussion and it had to do with prevailing wage. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that particular one, but it, it has to do with primarily districts who are in the process of building or capital improvement projects in which you do hiring of contractors and so forth. And the, uh, the law, I'm sorry, the, uh, policy was, um, supporting legislation to allow a school board to reinstate the state prevailing wage, which the state has already said is not necessary, and this was to try and reinstate that. It got a lot of discussion, um, and, uh, obviously, uh, for, a lot of people talked in favor of and opposition to, and it came down to a rather close vote, 134 yes and 160 no. So it's kind of 50/50 or, or at least fairly close. That was the only one that had, that received much discussion, quite frankly. And the delegate assembly this year probably ended about an hour shorter than last year's, for whatever reason, last year's was really long. This one, uh, there wasn't really much controversial except that very last one. Most everything was pretty straightforward and as I say, that the votes accordingly were pretty one-sided on almost all of them.
The pros and cons for that, um, discussion on prevailing wage are included in your packet. There is the...
Oh, okay.
The votes on the resolution are included in your, in the packet. So if anybody wants to read more on it, it's in there.
It, it wasn't really that heated, I don't think. I think it was more informative and there were, it was interesting. I, I didn't say anything at the delegate assembly, but you, you do kind of learn a lot about some of the different aspects of those policies when people stand up and discuss it. And you get an idea of who put each of them forward, what school district or board and the reasons for it. So it's, it's interesting. The only other thing that I'll mention to you, I think, is, um, there, there were three large group assemblies. The first one had a, uh, a man who gave the speech, his name was Luis Cruz, C-R-U-Z, he was from California. He might have saw him, his advertisement. He was really very good, very dynamic, uh, had wonderful stories to tell, um, very, very personal. He is a man who came up through the ranks, started as a, uh, elementary teacher, high school teacher, superintendent, and now is the, still a superintendent of a district. And I, I don't understand Los Angeles educational umbrella, but he's, he's a superintendent of some of the schools. I don't know quite how that all works. He doesn't, he doesn't superintendent the whole district, but some of the, primarily in Latino community. He's the first person in his family who ever went to school, college. And, uh, he, I'll just tell this one story then we can move on. He, he had three reasons why he wanted to, he enjoyed coming to Milwaukee. He'd never been to Milwaukee before. In fact, he'd never been to Wisconsin before. And he said there were three reasons. One is he's never seen snow before, so that was kind of interesting for him. The second was, when he was a kid, growing up and his parents were, uh, they were not migrant workers, but they were workers who were kind of itinerant. They moved from town to town and so he had a lot of, of movement when he was young. So he learned most of his English from watching television and what he watched a lot was Happy Days, which was in Milwaukee. And so he, from his youth on up, he always thought of, he'd like to see Milwaukee someday and of course he did. And the third reason was pretty interesting, reminded me of our past superintendent, Bob Brochek, a little bit because he had a picture that he had on the screen and it was his third grade class. And of course, he was a little boy and there was like 25 little kids, you know, and their teacher standing there. They were all, for the most part, Hispanic children and the teacher was a, a white, um, woman, relatively young. And he said, "This is me in third grade." And he said, "When I went to the third grade, I didn't know any English yet." Because he had very little education, formal up to that point. And he said, "My teacher," her name was Ms. Flyland, he said, um, she, she came up to me on the very first day and she said, "What is your name?" And he thought, because he wanted to fit in, he wanted to change his name. His name is Luis Cruz. He changed it to Luigi. And she said, she said to him, "What is your name?" He said, "Luigi." And he said, "Oh, okay." She didn't make fun of him. She said, "I, I don't think that maybe we're going to call it, I think Louise will work just fine." Because she knew what his name was. And she said, she said to him, "During this school year, if you teach me Spanish, I'll teach you English." And she was the first person to took a real interest in him. And the reason his connection was she was from Wisconsin. And so he said, "I don't know where in Wisconsin and quite frankly, I don't know where she lives any longer." But she was the first person who introduced me really to, uh, English education and took an interest in me. And really from that point on, he became quite interested in education. So he was a very interesting person. His background was quite interesting. So, that having been said, I, I went to the other assemblies and I will tell you, the governor of Wisconsin spoke. Scott Walker arrived on Friday, as he did last year, um, and was given very civil reception. And, uh, so he didn't say anything that was very earth-shattering. Nothing that you haven't seen in a newspaper, I'm sure. He didn't reveal much, uh, different than perhaps he has already laid out in terms of his plan. Big emphasis on technical school colleges, as you all know. And dual credit, um, is a big thing he's talking about now. Trying to keep costs down. Our cap programs, for instance, were mentioned not in Wapakia, but in general, um, and how good those programs are so kids get a head start on college, keep the cost down, et cetera, et cetera. And that was a big emphasis that he was making. So, all in all, it was a, it was a good conference and a lot of networking was, was good. And I enjoyed meeting.
Thanks, Carl.
Yes, you're welcome.
Upcoming meetings? I'll take that?
Yes.
Okay, we have some upcoming meetings. Thursday, February 11th is the Personnel Committee meeting. It's the day after tomorrow. That'll be 5 o'clock PM here.
We get a pre-day?
Well, you get a day off tomorrow, yes. You can probably find something for you.
Me and my mama.
February 17th, we have the Health Insurance Committee meeting. That's a district-wide group and that will be held at 3:30 PM in the district office as well, right here. Thursday, Friday, February 25, 26, the WSB Legal and Human Resources Conference. We have one board member attending, Pat Fair will be attending that, that meeting. If anyone else is interested, let us know. We also have one administrator presenting at that conference and Carl, I think will be presenting with, um, I forget his name, for M3, Kevin, Kevin Clardy from, from M3.
Carl, what day are you representing? That's the Thursday. Right.
And I think they'll use our district as an example on the health and wellness. Is that what, what the purpose is? So that, that's nice. Tuesday, March 8th is our regular board meeting. We do need to talk about, um, we'll probably do that later. We've set aside Thursday, uh, February 18th for a meeting and we'll figure out what time it is and what we're going to do, but we'll talk about that later on. Okay?
Committee meetings and reports.
Sandy can take that?
Well, Steve referred, I think, somewhat to the number of meetings that we've had recently and mostly focused on our district administrative research. We have had lots and all board members have attended, although they've been technically personnel meetings. We do have one item of business to bring before the board for approval today and it's a committee recommendation and so I am moving that we approve the request from administration in regard to compensating Colleen Villalobos and Linda Hozell for work done beyond their normal workload during the absence of the district's human resources secretary and receptionist. And that would be $1,500 each for those people.
All in favor?
We all need a second with a committee recommendation.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The rest of my report, I won't go detail by detail into the meetings that we've been holding. The most recent, we have started our initial interviews with a first group of candidates. We're going to complete those, this first round this week. We'll be meeting tonight to talk about a second round of interviews that will most likely involve, um, interaction with people beyond the board, another face-to-face with the board, but public participation and introduction to the district and to the faculty and staff and such. Our target is to conclude the interview and selection process by the end of February. If the weather holds up, we have already had one delay due to snow, snow day, but...
That's the last one?
That's the last snow day of the year.
Yes.
Thank you. The district administrator...
How do you know that's the last one?
The current district administrator is spoken. At any rate, um, we're going to meet tonight as a board, um, talk further about the process and the next steps.
Good.
Minutes from each of those personnel committee meetings are in the packet.
Yes.
And will the approval for, we could take those all at once probably?
Oh, sure.
They're really, because they're a closed session, they're really minutes just stating who was there, what time you met and what time you adjourned.
Yes.
So they're pretty skeleton minutes, but they are there.
Okay. Well, I would move approval of minutes, um, for the meetings that are listed.
January 14th, January 19th, January 25th and February 8th.
Is there a second?
Yeah, yeah, it's probably not one necessary.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? School visits.
I, I did go to a girl high to be known that was awesome. They, they skated their little hearts out. She didn't win, but they, yeah, hope.
They've been doing them a lot. Yeah, very well.
And congratulations to the dance team. Exceptional, exceptional.
I mentioned Molly who's got the junior high. Of course, this was the state, did your group, um, report last night to them?
Yep.
And I told her, of course, and probably, we were all right here. We couldn't go, uh, last night, otherwise I'm sure some of us would have been. But congratulations to you and the high school.
We'll have formal recognition of their accomplishments at next month's meeting. It's just that we didn't know when this general posted the results, so we'll do, we'll be doing that next month. Okay?
Uh, I, I went on a school visit, I went over to Sunny Day. And if you remember back in the fall, I went to Sunny Day, uh, when they were under construction. So I went to see the end result because they're now moved into their new classroom, the K4, the 4K, and, um, really nice, really nice, uh, facilities. And I had a nice chat with, um, Ms. Raleigh and, um, she, you know, kind of informed me about all the students she had for both sessions and, um, I asked a lot of questions about where they go after they, from there to what schools and where they come from, all those kinds of things. And it was very interesting. And, uh, if you haven't seen the, the classroom out there, really very nice. Wonder if they set up. And Sunny Day in general, the whole facility is really bulging at the seams. The, uh, the director told me there were 179 students went through there one day last week. So, it's a lot. So, very busy place, lots of activity. It was fun. Good.
Connie, you were a school visitor?
I did. Um, I went to the WLC and as usual, you know, our schools are just, they really are. Everything was so clean and bright and, um, the bathrooms had been painted. Now, I don't know when that happened exactly because it's been a while since I've been there, but that and the lunchroom, everything really looked nice. I decided just to kind of visit staff this time. So of course I started out with secretaries to sign in. You know, that office is very cheery. I asked how things were going and everybody responded, they love it here, they get along great. They have all the supplies they need, they got new chairs last year, they were very excited about that. Jackie said she would like a patio out back with some French doors, so. Everything's going, is going well. I interacted with some kids, you know, there's always so much community going on and it's just always fun. I stopped to see Mrs. Lewinsky in the health room and that was also very bright and cheery. How things were going, she said, "Very well." She had had, um, pretty limited, sick kids, this was, um, towards the end of January. Things were heating up a little bit, but otherwise it had been very stable. She has everything she needs and everything's going well. Then I stopped in at food service and I had a delightful visit with Dar, um, and Joanne and Carrie. They were on their lunch break, so I timed it really well. They had time to sit down and talk to me and, I don't know if you know, but there's some really exciting stuff going on in food service. My fellow board members know that I love to eat, so it's, I wish that that stuff would have been around when I was in school. Things that you're doing, they're just being so innovative with things. Dar kind of summed it up by saying, um, you know, that they give the kids what they want, um, but they keep it healthy. They try different things, see if it works. If it doesn't, you know, they throw it out, um, but then move on to the next thing. So it's so neat to hear that it's, you're moving ahead all the time and trying different things. She told me about they have a grab and go line, um, where kids can get a sandwich and chips and a choice of fruit. They don't have to, it helps, it allows them to avoid the hot lunch line so they can kind of get through a lot quicker. They're bringing in pizza hot pizza, which I had no idea. And it does meet the school lunch guidelines. I know you were all thinking, uh, but, um, whole green crust and vegetables. And Dar said, um, as of right now, it's at the high school four times a month and the middle school a couple times a month. Very well received. Of course, the kids are excited, who wouldn't be? I'd be excited if pizza had showed up. Haven't had any problems, it's delivered hot and it's cost-effective. So it's kind of a neat, um, neat program to get involved with. Dar also mentioned, um, that they're also kind of working on specialty pizzas, which for anybody who likes pizza is really going to be a big thing. They start with the basic cheese pizza and get recipes and ingredients to kind of make them a little more interesting and to also make them a little more nutritious. And that's going over well. They have what's called try-me-days, is that the right, um, thing? Where they'll use, um, they made pumpkin soup using local ingredients and then they have the kids rate, whether they like it or not, just, uh, kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down. I think you said smiley face stickers, um, make it easy. And the pumpkin soup was actually very well received, which is exciting. Pumpkins came from Turner's. They also tried sauerkraut, um, not quite so well received, but... They also tried sauerkraut, not quite so well received, but you know, kids are trying it, and that's really all you want them to do, is take a bite, spit it out if you want to, but at least try it. They're doing a lot more from scratch cooking, farm-to-school stuff, using several local producers throughout the state of Wisconsin. Mentioned that the chain school grew some bok choy, and we're using that in things that I know when I was at the middle school last year, they're doing, we're growing some things, a bath making salsa, growing tomatoes and peppers and things, so really neat to see that we're getting back to that after all the processed foods that we've been eating for the last many years. She mentioned that the summer school food service program went well, and again, that they're always looking to try something new, expand things, evaluate it to see if it's working, and kind of go from there. She did say too, she needs new steamers. I'll put in a word for you. I don't know if you want to hit a gave or maybe you lose, unintended, while they're getting settled.
Or the guy next to her.
Yeah. Anyway, it was a very, very nice visit, so some really cool stuff going on.
Good.
Connie, you mentioned that food grown at the chain school. I'd encourage anyone who does a school visit at the chain to take a look at their power garden, is that what it's called? It's a, it's a way of growing vegetables in, using water, so word for it.
Aeroponics, probably.
It's water.
Is it misted, or?
No.
Hydroponic? No, the horticulture kids have made aeroponics and hydroponic units from scratch for the last twelve years.
These kids grew, put plants in before Christmas break, and came back after Christmas break, and they had bok choy, and they had lettuce and spinach, and the kids were actually eating what they grew. That's part of the presentation that's going to take place in the Dells. And then also, isn't, there going to be an article in the paper on it?
There should be.
Yeah, pretty neat.
This week.
This week.
That's a pretty neat thing, so I think you'll be impressed by it.
Do we have to keep that silent until it comes out?
It'll be posted tomorrow.
Okay, so we can talk tomorrow about it.
We can talk about it on your cell phone right now.
Go for it, Steve.
Yeah, right.
Can I go into an administrator then?
Yes, please.
All right. Teacher handbook revision. Every once in a while, and the last time it would happen was many, many years ago, we get a teacher who's retiring and not needing health insurance, because they have health insurance from a different source. Our current handbook language says that you get reimbursed for, and it's up on the screen here, forty dollars each day to a maximum of ninety unused sick leave days, if you've accumulated forty-five, but the money can only be used if it's applied towards a health insurance premium. So someone who's not taking health insurance from the district, or from their own personal policy, does not, is not able to take advantage of that, I think it's thirty-six hundred dollars. So, when the question came, well, what about us, or how is that being handled, we took it to the Affordable Care Act, the Experts on Affordable Care Act, and they said, we cannot continue to do that practice. We can't pay health insurance premiums with district money that's accumulated from unused sick days. So I'm making a proposal that'll do two things. Number one, it will simply pay out an approximate amount each month that they would have paid for a single health insurance, but into a TSA, so they can then use that money to purchase whatever, health insurance, or they don't need health insurance, that's the other thing this language will accomplish, that person who doesn't need health insurance will still get the benefit of not using their sick leave days. So there's two things. It's now, everybody's eligible, and again, it's not going to cost the district a lot. The last time this happened was many years ago. I can't tell you the name, but it was probably twenty years ago when that happened. The, what we have experienced is people taking out district health when they retire, just so they can use this money, and then getting off district health once the money is used up, and that's just an exercise in fertility for everybody, that doesn't, doesn't make sense. So I'm proposing this language that, again, it's the same amount of money, but the retiree receives the contribution to a TSA account in their name, five hundred dollars per month, contributed until the dollar amount credited is paid out. It's a different amount for everybody, because some might have fewer days of unused sick leave built up, at least forty-five, but they may have less than ninety. Five hundred dollars a month until it's used up. It just seems fair the way you do it, and it's, it complies with the Affordable Care Act.
I would move approval of your recommendation to provide forty dollars for each day to a maximum of ninety unused sick days, and so on. The amount of the contribution to, she'll be five hundred dollars per month until the amount is extended. It sounds like a really, I'm glad for this recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Yes.
Question on the limitations on use if it's in a TSA.
My understanding is that if it's put in a TSA, it can be taken out the next day. It can be taken out the next day for whatever they want, but it's taken out, when it's taken out, it's taxed then. I can get this in both ways. And the advantage of putting it in TSA is that it goes in not taxed, just like it would be if you were paying, paying health insurance. The district paying your health insurance premium would be taxed, I believe. So, when it's taken out then, it is taxed, people can use it for whatever they want. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board monitor?
Okay. There was a request to monitor poverty issues and closing the achievement gap, or what is the achievement gap, and then our ACT test results, which we've had for a while, but didn't have an opportunity to present to you. So we're going to do those two things tonight. We're going to start with the poverty issues and closing the achievement gap, and here to talk to you about that is Director of Instruction Rhonda here.
And I want to make one observation. He's right on.
It is, isn't it?
It's a first.
Well, I'm not going to take credit for being on time, because then I can't blame you for being late.
So it's up on the screen, you also have a handout, let's look at. It's very simple, saying, kind of a challenging year to report on poverty gaps, because this year they decided to not measure it the same way. So, for the past, in two thousand twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, they were measuring the gaps for us. We got that school report card, I don't know if you remember that, and it would give us a score, and then it would say, how are you doing on closing those gaps? So they got rid of that, we're not... Everyone can see, but right now it's just still, and it can go to the newspaper, I think Angie did, is going to do an article on it, but it's just not on that website yet. So what I did was took the, this is the new test, this is the ACT for eleventh graders statewide. We'll have Mr. Becker report on the ACT that you're used to after this. So this is a new test, all statewide, eleventh graders took this, and this is their composite score, the state compared to our score, and I sorted by economically disadvantaged and then not. So you can see we did a little better, our economically disadvantaged students did, our not did actually a little bit, tiny bit worse, but I put the asterisk there so that you know that at the state level, often, they don't give that test to special ed students, and we, for the most part, usually do. Right, Marie?
There's a certain percentage of specialized that does not take it.
Yeah. So, so there's the difference there, the gap means that's the difference, and you can see that we have a smaller gap between students who are economically disadvantaged and those who aren't, that the state does.
Rhonda, can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Could you just explain again a little bit? I mean, I just heard you, but what determines the economically disadvantaged in terms of your...
That's free and reduced lunch.
Okay, we're still using that?
Yes. And in the very first paragraph, you can see that it's been pretty consistent over the last five years, our rate, it has actually gotten a little better this past year, we're at thirty-nine point nine percent.
Or protection on fifteen six.
It's been pretty much kind of the same, I don't know, Dar would be the one that, that gives us...
About forty percent?
Okay, and then the Badger exam was the new state exam at third through eighth grade. This is not, you can't compare these two tests to each other, because it's a different scale of reporting. The Badger is percentiles, not a composite score. So what you're seeing is a percentile of proficient and advanced students. It's not a composite score, so it's on a different scale. But you could still see how we did compared to the state in both of the groups, economically disadvantaged and not. And the first one, ELA, that means English Language Arts, and then on the bottom you have math. So in general, there's always a gap between how these two groups do, but we are able to keep our gap a little smaller than state average.
Someone would be wondering how we do with our economic disadvantage. It appears that we actually do very well with adult students.
It appears they do better than the other group.
Right. Which is interesting, I mean...
I think we need to just keep that quiet.
So on the, on the Badger, ways...
You were going to talk about how we pay attention to those.
Yeah. These are some ways, and, and research will show these, these are ways that you can address this gap. Of course, we always build relationships with students, but putting that extra out for certain individual students, and that goes with the second one, too, teachers spending time on motivating individual students. Small class sizes, more opportunity with text, vocabulary, and language. Four K is a great way to do that, so the earliest grades are the best to increase that language and vocabulary. In fact, I read one study that said, the gap they come with, that economic gap, it doesn't grow during school, so it, what we're doing in school keeps it at least the same or smaller. It doesn't, they don't suddenly get, have a worse achievement gap from where they started in the earliest grades. RTI is a great place to work on these gaps, just for every reason that a child might need to catch up. Additional access to books and materials, breakfast and lunch, so they can be ready to learn, and we do that in the school year and in summer. We have summer school instruction, so they have all that time when they're off school that they're still learning. Technology for those that don't have it, and highly qualified teachers stimulating curriculum that promotes socioeconomic diversity.
Rhonda, I have a question I have to hit on. The number is still kind of on the front side. Because we're, you're using two different kinds, you have a composite up at the top with relatively small numbers showing the gap of three point nine, two point nine, and then down below, the numbers seem kind of large. I know that there's a percentile there, right? So, how do we interpret that exactly? The twenty-seven point four, looking at the twenty-fourteen, fifteen, grade three through eight, the state was twenty-seven point four, we were twenty-three point four, does that mean twenty-three percent? Is that a percentage?
It's the percent of proficient and advanced students. So our economically disadvantaged in English Language Arts, forty-four point five percent of them scored at proficient and advanced.
Okay.
So almost half the students were proficient and advanced.
Okay, and, and the, so the twenty-three point four is just showing how the total number took it, twenty-three percent approximately did not...
No, that's just showing the difference between the two groups. So the one group scored almost seventy, and the one group scored almost forty-five, that's a difference of twenty-three point four percentile.
So it's just a difference?
Yeah, it's just a number, yeah.
So if you were to look at all these numbers as a whole, and I know the ones above are through the high school, grade eleven, but would you, would you say, if you could, that those numbers from K through twelve are basically the same? I mean, the ones that are, the composite, those smaller numbers, are they going to reflect pretty much what's down below? Are they too hard to tell?
It's too, it's too different, too. It would be nice if those all reported the same way.
Yeah, would be. I mean, you can say that if they're through grade as well as high school, are economically disadvantaged students better than the state.
Yeah. That's true. Yeah, all the way through.
It doesn't, so twenty-three, twenty-four percent comes as a lie, that's still pretty significant.
Yeah, there's, it's still a big gap, it's, it's, every time I see it, I'm discouraged, because I don't want any kids to have a reason not to achieve.
We're on the opposite side when you compare to the state, and we argue much better. This may not be a question that you are willing to attempt to answer, realizing that we've changed the measurement of the state to the board. Have you looked back at what the gap had been presented as in the past year or two?
Yeah, I did look at...
Attempted to...
I tried to, I thought that you were asking for this for board monitoring, because we had told you last time that that's what we were going to work on. So I went back to look at that, and in those three years of report cards, our gap was not getting smaller, it was about the same, even getting a tiny, like a couple tenths of a point worse, and so that is why we told you we were going to work on that. But, the more complicated it is, is it had poverty mixed with special ed, so it said working on gaps and just had all your gaps connected, it didn't pull out special ed and, or economically disadvantaged. So there's really no way to, to really say.
I'm sure we could tell you that here's where the gap was going from the last five years to now, but we don't have the data, we will five years from now, if they keep the same gap.
Yeah, they're already changing it this year, so...
And, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, and, and it's almost impossible to tell all of these wonderful things that we're doing strategically, but which of these is really, is keying in on the, on the problem better than the others? I mean, I suppose we're trying everything, like a shotgun approach, in hopes that they will all contribute.
Well, I'm sure RTI is really powerful, just dedicating that extra time every single school day to really target who needs that, and the other one would be four K, because just the amount of words a child hears in one day is, is shown to make a huge difference.
And one of those will come back until the four K kids move through the grades a little bit, right?
But the rest of the efforts go to reach different students. Some will be, will do better, because we give them access to computers, others have them at home, but the shotgun approach is to reach the different sets of kids who have different needs.
Do you have a sense how close the students who are not yet proficient or advanced, how close they are to, are they just hovering on the line?
I don't know, they do, on the Badger, they do proficient and advanced, and then they do break it down into two more, they do on basic and minimal, so you can see, most of them are basic, there's only a few minimal, but on the ACT, it's not broken out now.
Okay, can we move on to, all right, that's not, who can we go, we connect to Mr. Director or Mr. Director?
I'll go next. We're actually splitting it up. My, my part of it is looking at the statewide eleventh grade ACT test, so the same things that Rhonda just talked about, and we have a few copies of my handout here that...
That's the orange graph?
Yeah, that is the orange graph.
I don't have that on the screen.
Yeah, this is something different. So, the difficult part of this is that this is the very first year that we've done this test, and, so we don't have anything to compare it to. The graph that you have in front of you is, is a breakdown of everything that's going on for the ACT, and there are a couple new terms, and that's why the piece of paper's on the front. There's something now that they're calling a combined score, it's the second bar from the right-hand side. The combined score is actually the English and writing combined together. So writing is on a twelve-point scale, and then the English score, and so those combined together earn the combined score. The other one is English Language Arts, that's the bar that's farthest over to the left. Wisconsin is the only state that's using that, so ACT doesn't keep that data for any other schools in the United States other than Wisconsin, and it's a complex formula. I gotta laugh out of reading this. It's the average of English and reading scores, then combining that average with the writing score, multiply... It's the average of English and reading scores, then combining that average with the writing score multiplied by three. So, really? I don't know. So anyway, they came up with this English, English Language Arts score, which we happened to do a little bit better than the state average on. This test, waiting for the results, was kind of scary for us because historically, we've only had about fifty to sixty percent of our students take the ACT test. So that, that means that forty to fifty percent of our students normally wouldn't take that test. And you would assume that those students that don't take the test are not college-bound, they're not interested, they're not going to do very well on the test, they're not motivated to take the test. And so my concern was that we were going to get a composite score of something like sixteen. So for us to come through with a composite of nineteen point eight, the state average is twenty. We came very close to the state average. I wish that we had hit the state average or even exceeded the state average. It's given us some room for improvement, but I was thinking about Garrison Keillor and like Wopegon where everyone's above average. You know, there has to be an average. And, and so we, we helped to establish that by being just a little bit underneath it. This will provide excellent information for us in the future. When we look, if I click on any one of these bars while I'm in Wise Dash, which is the state's software for data management, it'll give me every student and their exact scores in every different area. So if we want to look at economically disadvantaged, we can filter based on that. It'll tell us which students that is, and it'll tell them, tell us what score exactly they got. And when you asked about that for the Badger score, whether our students are close to being there or not, they're everywhere in between. There are some that are very close, there are some that are above, and there are some that are way low. So it's really hard to say that, you know, to say in general our economically disadvantaged students are, are close to making it or not. It is also a statistically smaller sample. So one student or two students doing better or worse can have a bigger impact on closing those gaps than what happens with our normal, our non-economically disadvantaged students. So it's, it's all a numbers game that is very, very complex. Obviously, we're going to be working hard to decrease that gap and have all of our students achieving well. But from now on, this is what you'll see. This is the way it's going to be coming. We don't have anything to compare it to, but if we continue doing it this way, we'll have some good comparative data next year. Carl has some great data.
Rob, can I just ask you a question before? So, so you said if you go into the program, and you look up a student, you know, John Doe, you'll get everything. Is that going to be saved so that next year, if John Doe takes the test again, you can go back to see if there's changes on that particular person?
No, no. So it's one, one snapshot view, okay? So a particular student takes the test and earns a score. They're probably, if they're college-bound, they're going to, they're going to take that test another time, maybe two more times, hopefully improving their score. ACT is still going to do its graduating senior report, which is the report Carl's going to present to you. It's the report we've gotten for years. But now that report's going to be different because every one of our students is going to make that report. One hundred percent of our students will test because they did as, as juniors. And yet, the data is going to be skewed because some of those kids have gone on and they've taken the test two or three times to get better scores. So it'll tell us what the, the students get for an end score. That's not the score that the state cares about though. The score they care about is the one that they do as juniors. So Carl's going to present to you, he's got ten years of data to show how we've done on that. It's, it's great data, but it's the end. What he's got here is the last that he's going to have that's going to be comparable. So we're going to have to stop that, switch over to this, and develop a new data set.
Is there any, did, maybe you saw the article, is there any changes coming down? I saw an article where SAT and ACT, some of the national are linking about re-overhauling their tests altogether. Did you see that?
You know, I've, I've heard talk about that.
There was an article in USA Today or something about that.
I think it's, it's very possible, and what that will do is it'll make our data, not, not valid again. We'll start from scratch all over again, you know? But I, I mean, it's, it's good one-year snapshot data. We look at it very carefully and try to look for any patterns that we see, but, but we'd also like to compare it year to year, and that's really hard to do when they change the test. So, so yes, if they change the ACT again, we kind of start from scratch again.
Are you able to download the data?
You can, you can print it. I would imagine that we probably can download it. There's two versions of Wise Dash. There's the public portal, which any of you can go on. You can see our school district data, but you can't drill down into the individual data. The individual data is protected because it's, it's student data. So you need administrative rights to get into that, to be able to drill down to that level. But, you know, teachers can actually request that level of administrative privilege so that they can look at individual students if they so desired to do that.
Well, that was just actually a follow-up to Pat's question about being able to have data on individuals from year to year that if it was downloaded, you'd be able to start your own.
Yeah, you know, we can do that, and we can sort for economically disadvantaged, or we can look at ethnicities, we can look at boys versus girls, we can look at special ed versus non-special ed. So we, we can do that for any, any particular group, and it's easy to do that. Looking at an individual student, though, we only test them once. So we won't, you know, they could take the ACT again, but they won't, that data won't be compiled into Wise Dash. The state's only doing that once. So it's very hard to track. It's a, for us, it's a one, a one-day, one-snapshot deal.
Rob, when do they take it?
They take it March first and second this year.
What do you have, what happens if someone's absent?
Then they can take either the fifteenth or sixteenth. But there are, it's very, very limited, and it's, you know, if a student misses the first day, we have to notify ACT immediately. They overnight us new materials for them. We can't use the same materials. It's very, very, there's a very secret test protocol that has to be followed in very high states.
Parents are aware?
Parents are aware. We've sent out a note already, letting them know what the dates are, letting them know not to plan any family vacations. You know, that we want all students present on March first and second.
And, and if we do miss some students despite our best efforts, it's the district.
Yeah.
Well, we're in trouble. They count us as zero for us, and they pull our average down, you know? So we, we by all means want to test every student.
Was that the same comparable dates as last year?
Yes, last year it was the second and third of March, I believe.
Rob, how would you describe the student attitudes towards taking this test?
Ah, they hate it.
Struggle with WKCE students.
Yeah, this is, this is so much worse than WKC, to be honest with you. The ACT itself, the first day of testing, goes until one-thirty in the afternoon, and there is not a lunch break. So our students are not able to eat until the end of that. We do provide a snack for them at about ten o'clock in the morning. There's a twenty-minute break, but there's not enough time to have lunch, and it's very highly regulated. You, you have to follow the ACT protocols exactly. All kinds of paperwork, the proctors have to sign off on all kinds of agreements. The students are absolutely wiped out when they get to the end of it. And then we say, oh, by the way, come back tomorrow, we have another test for you. It's called the work keys, and you'll be at that until about one in the afternoon. So we'll get you a late lunch again, but come on and do your best the next day again. You know, they're, they're totally wiped out. It, it's, it's so, so hard on them, yeah. So we, we do our best to help keep their mind in the ballgame. We let them know how important this is, we let them know that this test can be used not only to get into college, but to get into tech schools, that if you do well enough on the test, you don't have to take some of the tech school entry exams. I don't know how much that, that weighs for them, but we do try to get the best performance out of them that we can.
One advantage is that if they do well on the test, the state pays for this test. If they want to retake, they would have to pay for it. So there's an advantage that way, that they know that it's not going to be a cost for them.
So they don't pay at all for the first time they take it?
Not for us.
Because it's costly, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, you know, but I, I think those kids that are really college-bound, they, they enjoy this test because it's their first opportunity to prove what they know. Most students that are college-bound don't take it already in, in March of their, their junior year. Usually, April is the big testing date for juniors, and many of our students will sign up for that. And then junior is the second largest of those testing dates, and so many of our students will sign up for that also as their second test. Good, Carl's up.
Before Carl goes, I just want to answer this question a little bit more. There should, it should never be understood that there's a lack of data on following a student and how they do because each building has an RTI committee or a data committee that we're watching. We're watching how every student does, using our district assessments, our MAP testing. Any student in RTI has additional checks, and we have the district writing assessment. Wise Dash does pull out some students at risk for dropout, dropout. It's called DU's, starting at seventh grade, and it looks across test scores too. So don't worry, we, we got our eye on.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure you do. But I was just thinking, if you had that student, that John Doe student, you were watching them. But, but at the same time, you, you kind of mentioned that the gap still stays about the same. So if one is going up, somebody must be coming down to keep that average about the same, I suppose.
Well, we've got different students every year too. People move out, get different, different information.
We've got some very smart juniors this year. We're, we're hoping for a great test course. We've got two of them actually that have been nominated as merit, uh, national merit finalists. So that, that's always encouraging. We're looking forward to seeing their ACT results.
I'm a question. Years ago, they used to, in middle school, they pulled out some GT teachers, would pull out some kids and have them take the ACT. Do they do that anymore?
We have the ASPIRE now, which all ninth grade have, have to take. It's, it's kind of a pre-ACT. I don't think we do that in middle school.
We do not have any students that, I think in the past it'd be parents who would want their kids to take those things. We don't have our students do that.
Right, right, and they chose not to do it anymore.
Well, it was kind of a good practice thing for kids that wanted to, just get an idea.
The letter came though from, not from the school.
No, it wasn't from the school, it was from, there was a, some, Lawrence, wasn't it, through something?
Yeah.
But it was kind of an interesting, you know, way to break into it.
You want?
I'll try to keep it short for Mr. Shamble.
Is he nodding off?
You received this ACT blue sheet form and the statistics. And normally you get about a five-year data information, but I gave you a ten-year data sheet on your table to take a look at some of the things that we've improved on and where we have gone in the last eleven years. If you look at the key on the bottom portion of that second page that we're talking about, the blue indicates the highest numbers performed for the last eleven years. The red is the lowest, and then if I start it, it exceeded the state average and, or they stayed the same with a double star. If you look at this past year, though, we were very successful. Did a very good job in all categories that were above the state average. And in two of the, or three of the different areas, we were the best that we've done in the last eleven years. Mathematics, science, and the composite scores. So with that said, I think that we're beginning to identify more and more of how we can help improve students' progress on the test and, and prepare them for doing well on the test. I'll leave you at that.
Over the course of those many years, has the ACT test changed substantially at any point along the way?
Added writing, but writing is not taken into consideration here. Not all schools require writing either.
I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, where our numbers were quite low. If you see where the ninety-one was of students participating, we're starting to see that there's more and more interest of students coming back. Now, on this last year, of the two thousand fifteen class, a hundred and nine students took the test out of a hundred and sixty-five. So that was a fairly good number of students that did attempt to take the ACT test.
I was going to say you can't really compare those numbers because of.
Each year's different.
Population difference.
But was, wasn't last year the first year that they had to take it?
Yes.
Of the juniors?
The juniors.
This is a, this, so.
So this is the seniors.
That's the seniors that graduated last year.
The seniors that graduated last year.
Oh, okay.
And the data that this is, is from the, this year's seniors, the orange sheet.
Participation is all across the board, across the state, right? Some schools a hundred percent participate, in other schools it's fifty percent. We're, we're towards the low side, though. You know, most, most schools are at a higher percentage, and that, that's why I think they, they worried less coming into this statewide testing that it was more of a known commodity for them. We're very strong in students that are going to the technical school, and traditionally, they haven't wanted to take this test. It's not something that they needed to do, so.
So, so just let me clarify one thing. So if a student on March second, first or second this year takes the ACT, a junior, and I know that the maximum you can get on ACT is thirty-six. So let's say, for the sake of argument, it was a good student, they got a third. Do they ever have to take the ACT again?
It's up to them.
If they don't want, I mean, that, that number's high enough, so they may never. Does that then register on, on that?
Yes.
It does?
Yep, it'll come forward. What, what that is, is it, it shows their highest test that they've taken. Those students may have taken it six times, but it'll register the highest one.
Including when they take it all as juniors?
Yes, that's a legitimate college reportable test. They each have to register for an ACT account when they sign up as a junior.
Thank you. Your lotion? Penny Manon?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Uh, yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Stephen Johnson?
Yes.
Kristen Greenfield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Steven Shamble?
Yes.
We move to adjourned conference session under state statute nineteen point eight five.
I, I would just like to say a couple things. That this month is National FAFA Week, and it starts the twentieth, and it's, or excuse me, I'm one month off. It starts the twenty-first, and it's done on the twenty-seventh. And Tuesday, we're having a teacher breakfast again. And if you didn't get an invitation, that means I don't have your right email address. And so if it fits into your schedule, I'd love you guys to come, and the FFA members will make and serve you a good delicious breakfast.
What's the date on that? Twenty, twenty second.
The twenty-third. Yeah, in two weeks. Anytime you get there, it's usually earlier than like seven. Six forty-five. Most people come at seven.
I go for the left foot. Is there going to be a quiz this year?
I don't think so. The quizzes, the quizzes have scared people in the past. Only Dave Larson wins.
He always wins.
Because Dan has taught him well. Tuesday, or Wednesday and Thursday, we're having animal education displays where elementary kids will come in, and our FFA kids will teach them about some domesticated animals, a lot of production agriculture animals. On Friday, we need to talk to our principals, and we're, the FFA members are starting to plan an egg Olympics. We haven't had that in a couple of years. And then the kids sold ads and wrote articles and took pictures to have the National FFA Week supplement. And Bob always helps lay that out and, and does all the work for that, so we appreciate him. We also have kids that wrote out PSAs for WDUX and, and fraud out of Clintonville. And, and the last thing is, last Tuesday, our FFA kids had a speaking contest at Oshkosh West. And there are a total of nine schools in our district, twenty-four. And there's a speaking contest such as parliamentary procedure, middle school, quiz bowl team, extemporaneous discussion. If I said parliamentary procedure already, there's the FFA creed contest, a job interview, and first and second place. and first and second place goes on, and they get a plaque. And we took half of the plaques. And so the other eight schools got to share the other eight. You know?
Yeah.
So I, we kept on winning. So doesn't happen.
Kind of greed.
Doesn't happen a lot, but it was, it was kind of good. So now the kids that took first or second will be in Monroe on March 14th competing, and whoever takes first at this contest will compete at the state Appafay convention. So that was kind of exciting.
Congratulations.
That's all.
I didn't finish the motion. Move to adjourn to close session under state statute 19.85, print one, print C to consider status of candidates that have been interviewed. We will not be moving back into open session on the conclusion, and I would ask for a five-minute break before we start.
I think through all of that, one point of discussion, we, just to note that we haven't completed our first round of interviews, so there are only five intermissions next tonight.
Sandy, second, roll call, I'm going to go Connie Baldwin, Kirsten Greenfield. Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Yes.
Benny Mannion?
Yes.
Steven Shamble?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.